Hi.
All right. Meeting come to order, please. First order of business, public comment. Anybody who wants to make a statement, raise your hand to be recognized. I guess you can come to the podium. Name and address and try to keep under three minutes if possible.
I won't be three minutes.
Thank you.
Brian Cisneros, 200 Wadley Falls Road. I just wanted to make note, I saw on the agenda, the middle school project, asking for a select representative assignment, which I believe Scott was asked to be on that. So I just wanted to recommend Scott at least, in the sense that I am the only lead representative on the school board, so I'd like to have some more lead people on this committee. I am not on this committee, being that I'm new, so I'd like to have some lead people and I'd recommend some other lead residents that have some engineering and background when it comes to facilities committee. This is about a three-year project, two- to three-year project that we're looking at, before we even get to the taxpayers, but it really gets us all on the same page as far as, you know, making sure that we're not only communicating, but making sure that expenditures, you know, large expenditures aren't being happening both on the school side and town side with no working together at all. So hopefully Scott will accept that position. I'd love to see him on that. I think he's would be an asset to the committee.
Thank you for coming. Is this something Mr. Scott would love to do?
We talked about it two minutes ago or something. But we thought we should do it officially or something.
Yes, I agree. We'll get to it. Thank you for that comment. Appreciate it. Anybody else? Move on to item three, committee and commission update. Conservation Commission, please.
Want to talk, first of all, about accomplishments in the past year and then subsequently talk about plans for the coming year. A big event in the past year was the finalization of the acquisition by the Society for Protection of New Hampshire Forests of the Powder Major Farm and Forest that lies in Durham, Madbury, and Lee. With the approval of Lee voters, the town was able to acquire a conservation easement on the forty-six acres that lie within the town of Lee. Why is that important? Well, what it does for one thing is gives us a place at the table in terms of the management of that land in the foreseeable and unforeseeable future. So it really is an important way of ensuring that the town's interests in this property are brought forward and enacted as much as possible. Another major set of activities over the last year, this is something that we do every year, is monitor the conservation easements that are held by the town. A distinction here is the town holds about thirty conservation easements on privately held property. There are also easements on town land that are held by other entities, the Forest Society being one, Southeast Land Trust being another, and oftentimes we are involved in monitoring with that entity. So they've got both the owner and the easement holder themselves present, and we can work out any areas of confusion. And then thirdly, there's another set of easements on private property that are not held by the town, but that are held by private entities, private nonprofits like the Southeast Land Trust or the Natural Resource Conservation Service. So when you take all of those together, there are a significant number of easements in town. The town has the responsibility for monitoring only those thirty that it holds. I say "only" because that means, starting in April and running typically through September and even into October, every Wednesday morning, we get a small group of volunteers who go out and check one of those properties, sometimes two of those properties on a given Wednesday morning, to ensure that it's in compliance with the terms of easement, that there aren't any encroachments on the boundary by a butters, and importantly, maintaining a good working relationship with the landowner. Education and outreach. Over the last year, Catherine Fisher has held, I think, three frog walks in the town forest. Ann Tappan has scheduled and held a woodcock nesting, or a woodcock viewing event. Amanda Gorg has maintained a Facebook page for the Conservation Commission, which was a new thing for this past year, and she has been maintaining that very responsibly. Additionally, we have a standing invitation to any residents that we make notice through the town prior, an open invitation to join us on any of the monitoring walks that we do on Wednesday mornings. So that's another opportunity to explain to residents what this is all about, why we're doing it, what the benefits are, are there downsides, if so, what are they? It's a good educational opportunity. Management of town-owned lands. This applies to conservation lands owned by the town, for instance, the town forest, the Joe Ford Wildlife Preserve, Lee Five Corners Reserve, and there are some others. But in terms of management activities over the last year, we have hired an herbicide applicator to assist with the control of Oriental Bittersweet in the town forest, where there's a small, relatively small patch behind the safety complex here that we're gradually getting under control. We've also used the same applicator at the Joe Ford Wildlife Preserve to control a big stand of Japanese knotweed that has been right along the road and a little bit intruding into the property. And that got knocked back pretty substantially last year, and this year, I think, we will knock it down by ninety-nine percent, if not more. And then a small amount of work up on the Rothwell Reserve, which is on Route 152, oh, maybe one or two tenths of a mile west of Wadley Falls Bridge. Again, it's mostly Japanese knotweed and a small stand of Norway maple, which is another invasive plant that we're dealing with. Another thing that we took care of was Ann Tappan worked with volunteers from UNH Forestry Program to improve the woodcock habitat on the non-recreational portion of Little River Park. And other thing that was really useful and, I think, fairly dramatic this year was Randy Stevens and his crew worked on the old apple orchard that's out behind the safety complex that was getting very overgrown. It was valuable for its early successional habitat for both birds and wildlife that thrive in that kind of habitat, and it's very much vanishing in this part of the state. So with a brush cutter and a lot of energy, Randy and Peter Hoy did a terrific job in terms of bringing that back to almost a functional apple orchard. We haven't pruned the trees for fruit bearing, but otherwise, the property is, I think, very productive. For the coming year, with Powder Major Forest, one of the things we'll be doing is collaborating with the Forest Society to develop management plan and particularly trails that are going to be used for recreational purposes by members of the Lee community. We'll continue the oversight of the town's conservation easements. We'll continue education and outreach activities. One of those is this coming Saturday, in which we will co-lead with the Forest Society an easement monitoring walk on the town forest. And this is something the Forest Society has advertised to get people from a whole range of communities who live in this part of the state to come, see how it's being handled, and ask questions of both the Forest Society person and of the Conservation Commission's representative, Catherine Fisher. We also hope to finalize maps of trails on town-owned lands that we hope to get posted on the town website and have a limited number of hard copies printed. That's a work in progress right now, but we're hoping we can complete it in the next several months. And we want to also conduct for residents in town who are interested in controlling invasives on their property, a walk on a private property in town in which the owner has, on her own initiative, done quite a remarkable job in terms of controlling a variety of invasive plants. So it's good when a co-resident, rather than someone from the Conservation Commission or some other entity, is telling them what to do. Here is a place where they can see how others are handling it. And as far as the management of town-owned lands, we'll continue the effort to control invasive plants, and we'll undertake other activities as they arise. If there are questions, I'd be glad to take them.
I had a couple. I want to thank you for all you do. It sounds like you're very active, especially with your group. Do you see, is there a listing of lands that the Conservation Commission is looking at or opportunities to protect?
The closest thing we have to that is something we call our co-occurrence map, which shows in layers various natural resource qualities that exist on a particular piece of property. So the heavier the layering, the more interest it would appear to have to the Conservation Commission, but we aren't actively soliciting ownership of easements on ownership of those lands.
For curiosity, you might not know the answer, but I'll throw it out anyways. Contiguous pieces of property that link together, do you have any vision of what our biggest is in a ton of Lee, where pieces of land are stuck together that all been protected?
We do have a map, and it's on the website, that shows all the conservation lands, and so you can very readily see where there are those contiguous properties.
Questions from the board?
No, you do a great job, and we appreciate it.
Thank you. We try.
I wonder if we could have, I noticed that you submitted a report, and I want to appreciate that very much. Could we put that in the ECRIM? And there's different commissions and boards, reports to the Board of Selectment. It'd be nice to put it in there, even though it'll be up on YouTube, right, or in a minute, it's nice to see it in the ECRIM as well. Appreciate it. Thank you. Anybody from the Act Committee? We'll give them opportunity next time. Thank you. Number four, Jeff Soloway, New Hampshire State Representative.
I think he's here.
Wow, we're having a rough old time tonight. Well, the weather's nice.
It's a lovely evening.
It's a lovely evening. Don't worry about it.
This meeting's going faster than I anticipated.
Well, we'll figure that out. Now let's go to item number five. Mr. Stevens, how we supervise a paver, seal coat the public safety complex parking.
And the salesman, GMI paving, came around, GMI got the bid this year from paving. And we looked at all the roads and everything, he came around with the public safety. He didn't really know quite what to say about it, because to blend it in with the doors and everything, he thought you'd have to bring this big milling machine, and you've seen him out there on the highway, a big, huge machine, and mill out in front of the doors to cut it down. I got a pitch again, I think. It kind of shows, I'll pass it around, but you can see if you put an inch of pavement on me, it's not going to be able to open the door.
Yeah. Is that a wooden door?
No, it's steel door, yeah.
No, I think it's a metal door.
Oh, you cut some of the bottom.
Oh, yeah.
Exactly. I think the water is still running in.
Yeah.
So he suggested, well, he says it doesn't look that bad. He was thought about, seal coating. I don't really thought about it. So he was supposed to give me a price, supposed to give me a price, and he finally did give me a price. Loved the time they were here paving. You know, I think it was just about after the last meeting, it was over, so. Anyway, he gave me a price of seventy-five hundred to seal all the cracks, crack, do crack filling, and then seal coat the whole thing. And they'd have to come twice because it has to dry. It's not quite like pavement where you can get right on it fairly quick. So you'd have to do like this side one time, and then wait overnight or a day or two, and then do the other side. So emergency personnel, you get in and out. So in order to come in and grind it and everything else, he had to do mill it. He thought it'd be an extra five or six thousand dollars to reline it, that involved, and I put the bid out, I guess. And we had it listed as an option as well, so. So you sort of have a six and one and a half a dozen of the type of deal, so. I did come up with another idea where, I don't know if you can see it, but I'll pass it around, where we would mill right in line here with the building and come right across and back, and we'd just seal coat this. That way, you wouldn't have to, the big problem is milling out all around all these bollards and doors and everything else. That way, I think there's enough pitch here, you could make a one-inch cut here, just paint this section, and then town could seal coat that and reline it. So that's a, that's a third option, which would be a little less money, but. So, you know, I did some research on the seal coat appears, it's a pavement, it's in decent shape, it'll last three to five years. The problem with paving, you keep, every time you do it, if you do it every ten years, pretty soon you're going to be five or six inches, and so in a way, I'm thinking the seal coating might be a better way, just because we prolong building the whole parking lot up and changing the grades. We can do it, I think the other problem, I have to get them back in here to do it, especially seeing the state's showing I want more money, that you're probably going to do a lot more work. This job isn't at sixty-two eighty tons, it doesn't look good.
How long before you can drive on it?
I don't know. For the paving, you could drive on it an hour.
No, but the seal.
The seal coating, I think it's overnight anyways, maybe two days.
Okay, so we would do half and then do the other half, and then come back and do the second coat?
Right. No, I don't know if you can put stone dust on it like we do. We'd have to do some more investigation, stone dust, like we do with the hot top, it might cure it up a little quicker.
Is there any spots out there in the parking lot that are really disasters?
No, it is starting to crack.
Yeah.
The big thing, I mean, I guess hindsight's great, we probably should have sealed coated it three or four years ago, when the paper was really good. As I've mentioned before, the big thing is, the sun just takes all the goodness out of the asphalt, makes it brittle, so the longer you let it. And seal coating will, will help that sun.
Seal coating is good.
Good for it. You know, I don't think it stands up as good, maybe in parking lot, it does it right, but. Well, it really doesn't make any difference to me, I just.
Of course it does.
It doesn't really.
Of course it makes a difference to you.
Honestly, it doesn't make a bit of difference to me.
Scott?
I'm fine with the seal coating.
Yeah. I think that's probably the way to go for now. Like I said, it'll hold it off for three to five years or something.
And you can seal coat it again, I mean.
Exactly. Depending on much breakage you see out there.
Right. The longer you wait, I mean, if you waited another year or two, probably seal coating might not be an option, because I guess once you get dry enough, it'll really bond to it, but. I was looking at, the last time they did it, it was supposed to take two-hundred-and-eighty tons, they put four-hundred-and-forty on it, so, I mean, probably it was to our advantage they put it on thick, because it was thirty-three ninety a ton thirteen years ago, and now it's sixty-two eighty, so, you know, it's just about doubled, so. I think that's probably why it stayed as well as it has, because they put on a real good thick coat.
Can I ask a question?
Please.
The, this building and the transfer station were done about the same time.
Exactly, same year.
That was on the list, too.
All right.
Is that a candidate for getting seal coated, or what do you think about that one? Because if they're coming back to do this one.
The pavement, the pavement's in worse shape up there, I think.
Okay.
Especially the road going in, but it's, you know, doesn't have a base, it's an old road with not much of a base under it, so. I noticed some rutting in the road and whatever. It's not, as far as the road, it wouldn't cost much to do that.
But how about around the facility itself?
Yeah, and I think there's going to be some changes there. I think I might wait a year or two till we see what new management is in mind.
Oh, there he goes.
All right. I think I'll, we'll go with this. I move to authorize GMI to hire a subcontracted seal coat the public safety complex parking lot at the cost of seven thousand five hundred dollars. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say it. All right, folks, who cares? Thank you very much.
It went off.
Uh-oh. You're back.
I'll set you up close.
Okay. Let's move on. Item number six, Mr. Scott Bugby, Heritage Commission Rep, signs.
Signs, signs and rock. The Heritage Commission took on the job of putting up signage for the new trail that's down on Thompson Road. And I walked it, was it Saturday? Whatever day it was, Saturday. Checked it out, and one of the things, we thought we'd have to put up three signs, but the trail was a little all the way to Cartland, so we need one sign by the road and then one sign to interpret the site. So one of the things the Heritage Commission asked, if it's okay with the town, we'd like to ask Randy if he would come and do the walk with us and give us some ideas in terms of signage, where to put it, and kind of his technical expertise in terms of the interpreting of the site, because he wrote the mill book, so he knows lots of knowledge on that. So I thought we'd ask officially, so we don't have, department heads wandering all around doing things for different departments, so I thought I'd ask officially for that. Secondly, we put up, the 250th Committee put up the flagpole, a little over a park. Heritage Commission has kind of taken on completing some of those things, and one of them is to put a plaque down there, and we've come up with a stone. It happens to be in South Lee, so it's a Lee stone.
A Lee stone.
And it's got a nice beveled edge, but we wanted to see if the Selectmen would be okay if we asked Mr. Stevens to help us move it to Little River Park and install the plaque on it. Once again, we don't want to be asking somebody that works for the town to do something like that without the Selectmen knowing about it and approving it, so.
What's the plaque say?
I didn't, it says, this plaque is commemorate the 250th anniversary, this, I can send it to you. The plaque's probably going to be about ten inches square, bronze or brass.
You have any problems, Randy?
No.
When do you think you would install it?
When?
Yeah.
Well, it depends, Mr. Stevens' schedule in terms of, one, coming to see the rock itself and seeing how to move it over there. Probably weighs about four hundred pounds.
Oh, gosh.
So it's not small, but hopefully nobody will try to steal it, so.
Can we drive the skid steer into it?
Probably. Just don't hit my well.
Well, see, now you know where it is.
I kind of have to know where it is.
That was a trick question.
Ah, you loaded that one.
As long as you don't hit my well, you're okay.
He gets a rock off his property and we inherit it, so that's a.
Well, it's a nice rock, because it's kind of, but the face of it is like beveled like this, so you can install a plaque right on top of it, so it'll look really nice, so. Oh, and also, you have to accept the donation of the rock. I don't know how much it's worth, maybe a dollar.
We'll lean on the tongue, we'll straighten up the language on that.
There's a lot of rocks around there.
This is a nice rock. This is a South Lee rock.
I have some nice rocks in my yard.
I know.
See, that's a South Lee rock, too, so.
Well, first of all, I think it's good use of funds, and secondly, obviously, as long as Randy can fit into his schedule with his personnel, I think it's all, it's fine. Sounds good.
You're engaged.
You're engaged, you got it. You can move the rock. Item number seven, Toby Van Aken, Transfer Station Manager, swap shop.
Yeah, we have a few issues in the swap shop area, but a lot of it's pertaining to the parking and driving around that swap shop area. It's had a lot of residents do a lot of, they speed around that corner, there's parking, they park double line, over the line, they swing the doors open. Somebody's bound to get hurt one of these days, and I hate to see that happen on my ship. Anyways, also, too, we have a lot of the volunteers, or actually not the volunteers, the residents are dropping items down and not paying for it. And there's times, each time, each day, that I go down there and check, there's usually a hundred, something, you know, a couple hundred dollars worth of stuff down there that should have been paid for ahead of time before it dropped off. So at this point, it's pretty much way out of control. We gotta, I sat down and talked to the volunteers to, let's get on board with the procedures, read the procedures, try to follow the guidelines on the procedures, and then see what we could do to help the residents to make that decision to get up there to pay for the items first before they drop off. So what I did was, I had them come up, I tell the residents to come up and pay for the tickets before they drop off. At the same time, we could look at the items, if it's worth putting back down there or not, because sometimes it gets overcrowded with a lot of different types of materials and items. And some of the items that come are dropped off, sometimes they don't work. So it's a little out of control, but we're trying to monitor that, trying to make it safe down there for a lot of young ones that run around down there, and sometimes they hang out down there at times. So we have a fifteen-minute sign there that we'd like to back it up to about five minutes stay, so actually, we try to reduce the traffic going around, because times they park on both sides of the road. So we're trying to work with them to move forward. So having the new swap shop, talking about it with the, if you decide to do a new swap shop, I have a layout here of the site where I'm looking at, it'd be nice to put it down by the bulky fee building, the new one, so we have more control of the items coming in and also being paid what's supposed to be paid, because we have to pay to get rid of that stuff. So it's be a lot easier to keep it clean and maintain the money and work with the residents to keep it there or not. So we also keep the facility clean, too, at the same time. So now we have to go down to the old swap shop area, try to monitor it, and it's very difficult for us to monitor what's going on down there and taking care of it. It's a big safety thing down here, a big problem. And a lot of times, you get too many cars here, if somebody gets hurt, you're not going to get the fire trucks down in that area. It's just too congested in that area when that, when it does happen. So I was talking to Tom, and we're going through it, and I think that in order to contain, control the speed, so I laid down some speed bumps and put some extra signs up there for now until we decide what the shop shop, where the swap shop should be during, during the location, get a location where. And that's pretty much it, basically, what we could do to try to minimize the safety down there with people. We don't want to see anybody getting hurt. So I have these right here, that location, I made up three of them, and also there's the procedures in there. Some of the wording in there doesn't really, doesn't, doesn't sound right, and I was asking if I go ahead and revise it, if possible, or if you'd like to take that consideration and review it, and any changes you'd like to have, maybe we can run with it and go with it.
Well, thank you for your presentation so far. Yes, we'd like to study this a little bit.
Yeah, there's a lot in there. You can see where the old one's at, where we can put the PT container, and the new, I've been working with the Energy Commission, and they're proposing that, too. So this is what I came up a few months back and put it near the old building where the maintenance shop is at, and that's bringing, that's bringing the residents too close to the operation, because we run a lot of heavy equipment in that area. And it's still far away from the bulky building for them to come up and purchase tickets when items need to be purchased, so.
A couple of comments. Number one, they'll need copies for Town Administrator Denise, this material.
I ran out of paper.
Secondly, with respect to moving the swap shop, I think is a good idea. Obviously, we'll take input from fire, we'll take input from police at this point, well, that's basically all the department heads that they want to put input, so make sure you garnish that type of input.
Yeah.
As much as possible. Right now, though, in the middle of the time. Right now, though, in the middle of the time before we make this change, first of all, money in the budget for such a change over this next year?
John, if I can interrupt just for a second. The Energy Committee is looking hard at the swap shop project, so they have, they have a lot of different things happening as far as, you know, what's, what's it gonna take to build it? I think they're looking at collecting materials, and it's also related to attaching it to the current building, or putting it in front of the current building that's there, and share the, share the heat source, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, at one time, I thought, and that's, that's where I was getting at, I think the brand, building it too close to the operation, we do a lot down in that travel with...
Well, they were gonna route the road, they were gonna redirect the road around the outer perimeter of, actually go, it would go behind the current swap shop, but right through it, one of the two, and move that road out, and then the parking would come in closer to the new swap shop. So that would get that, get that, if you would, get the traffic away from the transfer station after they exit. So there is a lot going on with it right now.
Yeah, they're, they're looking at that, too, and plus, they, they like the idea of being near the bulky building, because they'll have a little more control of everything.
I think you're...
The person's there, he could actually manage and look after the facility instead of being way down beyond, and then when they come up, the purchase ticket, he's gotta hook it up here, one of us gotta run out in order to try to look at the items.
If I can suggest, I know that the Energy Committee's meeting tomorrow night, and I'm gonna attend that, and I'll ask them to put something together to present to the Board and...
Absolutely.
Can you bring everybody up to speed on what's going on, and I'll go from there?
Yeah, and I even talked to the volunteers, get everybody on the same page, because they were never on the same page. Nothing was going on, it's more of a hangout place. So they're all on board now at this point, it's not a bad practice of that.
Curiosity, I know, I just stumped through that quickly. You do have a policy for operation of the transfer station? Is this recommended?
I gotta find, I don't, haven't found, I'm pretty sure it's there. But the policy has been written a few times, I don't know how long ago it could have been, a few years back. The most current one I've seen was like 2012.
Yeah, that's what it's been, 2012.
And then there's a, a page in there, too, that's, and the volunteers wrote up the hazards of that building at this point. The ears, the roofs leaking, the structural sound, don't know what it is or about, it's been there for, it's the old one, twenty-something years, I guess, I don't know.
So I think it's a, okay, and I think it's a good idea, the direction that you're moving, I'm, I'm concerned about what's happening now, and you did bring it up about speed bumps.
Yeah.
About the goodwill containers, they seem to be in the way as well.
Right. People like to... They're gonna be, yeah, we're looking, talking about moving those on the other side. But, you see, we have an open spot beyond the swap shop that they, they could park, they could park there, they move up. A lot of, they park, continue to park, you see a couple people park, they trail right behind or park on, on the maintenance side, and it becomes a problem like that, so...
Questions from the Board?
Toby, can you give me an idea, you mentioned early on about people dropping stuff off at the swap shop and not paying? What kind of things are they...
Like, like ACs, that's, I think that's a $10 thing. So ACs, we gotta, gotta hold the freon, and we gotta dispose of it, and like TV sets, dropped off, that's $10 to $15, and now that's being paid for. Sometimes you go down there, you'll see a bunch of stuff, and at the end of the day, I only have free tickets, but there's 20 items. I'm just throwing a number out, and there's quite a bit of items that adds up.
Clarify, if, if it's not working, I understand that, but if something's working, you're not accepting those kind of things to the swap shop?
If they're, if they're working...
So let's say somebody gets a new TV and they don't want the old one, because it's two years old.
Wow.
Just kidding. But they leave it at swap shop, they still have to pay whatever it is in the $10, even though somebody's gonna take it, probably, because it's not working?
Yeah, and then what they'll do is, if they pay for it, they get their ticket back. So that's, that's the thing that's out of the loop. That's where the, the volunteers didn't, didn't quite get, understood that.
Okay.
So I sat down and explained to them that, let's try it this way. Let them set them up, pay for it, get their name, phone number on the back, put a tag on it, say it's already been paid, right? And then once it disappears, give me the tag, and I'll go ahead and call them, give them their ticket right back, and they can use that $10 anything they want on any other items.
Okay.
But if they don't take it within the next amount of days or weeks or whatever, we have to dispose of it, and that, that goes into the...
I just want to interject, this has been the existing policy, it just hasn't been followed.
And it actually...
I just want everybody to know, this isn't something that's brand new, it just hasn't been followed.
See, a lot of the, the stuff you're gonna read, once you go through that, you're gonna see that none of it's been, that I know since I've been working there, none of it's been directed. You got people in there going through it, that taking it out, taking it home, and sometimes they bring it back. And then they say, well, I got it here. We gotta try to get a little bit of control, that's what we're working on right now, trying to get it under control to the point, make it easier for all of us, so we can monitor it. So that's, that's what I'm proposing.
Is this too much? Because these people are volunteers and aren't getting paid.
Nope.
Is this asking too much of these people? Are they like overwhelmed, or what's the...
I, they are, now they're on the same page now. They do have an understanding now, they never, so I incorporate them into the whole thing as them being employees, instead of single them out. So I got them involved on everything just about, just to let them know, this is what it is, and this is what the town's asking for, we have to obey by the town procedures, just go step by step at a time. If you're not sure, come and get me, I'll be down, I go down there like every half an hour, I go down there, just to see, trying to help them out, and direct them, steer them the right way, for now. But if that's moved up to the area, what we were just talking about, I think it'll be a lot better control, the person out there, don't have to go as far, he's right there, he can monitor the whole situation, the whole thing, of items, to the, the money, and so forth, et cetera. But I, they, they're getting on, they're coming, they're starting to do it now, we just had the meeting last week, and they're starting to get, I have one person that's coordinated, and I check, we're having a meeting, we have a meeting now, it's gonna start like once a month, or whenever they like it, once a month, or maybe twice a month, it could be, till we decide whatever the Energy Commission comes up with, and we'll just go over there.
Further questions?
Just in terms of when we, because there's money in the budget for doing those energy-saving things from the Energy Commission. So who is gonna take the lead? I guess I'm fuzzy in terms of, is it gonna be, are we gonna task the Energy Committee with completing these things, or are we gonna task one of the town department heads?
Well, I think we should see what the plan is, because I know that, for instance, Chuck Cox, I don't know who, they've had several people involved in putting together, if you would, the plan for the facility itself. And I know that they've had, is it ever so worse, they had somebody else come in and look at some other cost reduction type issues relative to, to the energy itself, the energy usage itself. So I think it's time that they, and I know that Sharon is working on that, come in front of the Board and show you what they're doing.
So let's wait to gather more information for a suit the Energy Committee has to say, and then we'll go.
Right, and also, if we end up taking that route with the Energy Commission and build, actually, it'll, it kinda like shows what the town is doing. You know, right now, we're looking at a shed that's about ready to fall. Now we got something, something coming in new, you might have, get more volunteer, you never know. That's the hope.
Well, I appreciate you coming forward.
So try and get under control and work from there.
And I appreciate all the effort, I know that you're new in this position, and it's gonna take a while to see what's out there and find what's happening, though. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
John?
Mr. Soloway, Your Hampshire State Representative. Please come forward. Good to see you, Jeff.
Hello. You want me to sit?
No, you stand.
Oh, here, terrify me. Very quick item from your two state representatives. As you say, representatives, we are aware that our abilities to enact legislation that will affect the people of Lee is apparently rather limited. You may have noticed this from reading the union leader or the Concord Monitor. However, what we note is that the Select Board is very much in touch with people of Lee and has a great deal of agility and flexibility in dealing with issues that arise on a local level. That's an ability that state legislature doesn't seem to have, at least in this session. We'd like to know more about what the citizenry in Lee would like to see from us as their elected representatives. And what we would like to propose is a Lee Listens Evening, in which your state representatives and the Select Board hold an open town meeting and open forum, inviting, in addition, our state senator, and even our congressional delegation, if they choose to come, so that we can be in touch with what our citizenry want from us. So we'd like to suggest that we work conjointly to pick a time and a place and publicize an event that would be Lee Listens.
Questions, comments?
I like it.
I think it's a good idea, I think you'll probably have to work it out with the Town Administrator, with time and place that's available to do these type of things. And who would be the coordinator? Would it be you?
It could be me, it could be Amanda Gorg, but...
A single contact, so we know.
Yeah, I think Amanda would probably be the person to work with, she's a little smarter than I am. But I think that there has to be an equal commitment on the part of the Select Board and the state reps. We have a great deal of respect for what goes on here at the Select Board.
Well, we'll try it out, see how it works. And if it sounds real good, we'll continue. Thanks for coming, Corey, appreciate it. Need any other information?
No, we'll work with Amanda on schedule.
Sounds good. Item number eight, Karen Rossi, Planning and Zoning Administrator, Scott Nemeth, Police Chief, excuse me, Fire Chief.
He's demoted.
Woke him up over there, didn't I?
So the first thing is the request permission to waive insurance for dancers, karate, martial arts, and other types of similar demonstrations at the fair. So the fair is fast approaching, and we have some local magicians who would like to play music, and I wanted to get permission to waive the insurance requirement for the local musicians. And also, before I reached out to local dancers, et cetera, like the Joy Dance, I wanted to see what insurance requirements were going to be required for them before I asked them if they wanted to do a demonstration with no public participation.
Liability? Julie?
Oh, there's always liability. What I, when Karen and I spoke about this, what I suggested was, as you see the language, the proposed language that was in the agenda, so in other words, if there are Lee residents, regardless of age, if it's kids, I think last year there were some kids that were musicians. Obviously, they're not gonna have insurance, and we shouldn't require them to have insurance. But for example, if there is a school, a dance school, a karate school, that wants to come and give a presentation, I am assuming that they have insurance coverage, in which case, we should at least get their proof of insurance, just to make sure, because that's somewhat of a more formalized group. And then again, as Ms. Rossi mentioned, I would just make sure that there's no public participation, because that's where the, that's where the liability would become greater if, say, a karate school is holding people from the audience to demonstrate, that might present a bigger problem. But I think we've already had the waiver for musical groups in the past.
How would you guarantee that you get the insurance from people who's supposed to have insurance? It's just, they'll volunteer the information, I assume.
We ask, we call, we email.
You believe her.
Yeah. We hound, we beg.
Pastor.
Yeah.
Okay. Board? Carrie, any issues?
I don't have any issues with it, no, I think that's fine. Most people, if they have insurance, there's no problem getting a piece of paper from the insurance company saying, here's, here's the coverage, so...
The things that will still be covered, food, they still need insurance for food?
Yes.
What's the other things that they still need insurance for?
Actually, Chairman, of course, has the language.
It wasn't in the package.
So basically, if you make homemade things, you don't need to provide insurance, but food, you definitely...
Oh, I have another question. It says, for the people that do have to pay, it says, checks payable to Lee Fair. Are you an entity? Shouldn't it be the town of Lee?
No, the Lee Fair has its own trust fund.
Yeah, I understand that, but are they a legal entity, you'd be running checks to them?
Can John Tappan answer that?
Yeah, I believe the checks get made out to the Lee Fair.
Mr. Tappan?
Or the Lee Fair Fund.
Lee Fair Fund.
Please.
Not to put you on the spot, John, sorry.
John Tappan, Keeper and Chair of Trustees of Trust Funds. For us to deposit the checks, we have no problem with checks that are either made out to the Lee Fair or Town of Lee. This is a charitable donation for these people, and for it to be considered charitable, as I understand it, it should be made out to Town of Lee, because that's the municipal entity that the Lee Fair is part of. I don't know if that answers the question?
Well, that might...
I mean, I think the ideal is that the check is made out to Town of Lee dash or comma Lee Fair.
I think we've taken the checks, quite frankly, any way that they come in.
Yeah, I'll make, man, I'll take.
Yoni, you have any problems?
It was just a question.
Sure. What I'll do is, I just want to read this for the record, just to put it in here, they say, so, obviously, the Board will waive the insurance requirements, I'm gonna read the, "In addition, musical, dance, or athletic performances or demonstrations are not required to carry, to provide, excuse me, provide liability insurance, coverage for the fair, provided that there is no public participation, but are still required to complete this form. However, if any such performance carry liability insurance through their normal course of business, then proof of such coverage must be provided." So I'm gonna move that, I like the change, and approval of waiver. Is there a second? Further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries, thank you, Karen.
Thank you. Also, Chief Nemeth and I have been discussing for a while now, charging certain fees for certain items through both departments, some we work together on and some we don't. It was a mistake on my part, we needed to have a public hearing for this, so we rushed it to get on tonight's agenda, but would like to get some feedback, and then we'd like to notice it for a public hearing at the next, as soon as possible, which hopefully would be in two weeks, at the next meeting.
I looked at the, the listing, I think it looks pretty good, but did you, you did compare to other towns? Are we parroting?
Yes.
Is this what other towns are kinda doing?
Yeah, I looked at Barrington, Dover, and then some further towns out in Auburn I looked at, but just to get a rough idea, I kind of want Barrington and Dover, Durham, since they're closer.
And can you give me an estimate of the, it's hard to do this, you know, if we were to go ahead with this, what the improvements that would be, and the cost amount that you think would be in a year?
I'd say for us, probably about $5,000.
And four is what I project for us.
It doesn't appear to be a hardship.
On mine, absolutely not. It's consistent with what surrounding towns do, it's consistent with, it's, in my opinion, it's more fair for the residents, the way we broke out the test pits for residential subdivision and commercial development, and everything else.
Excuse me, Karen, which is that? It's not there, it was in the packet.
It was in the packet.
Yeah, it's in the packet.
And then some of the fees on the chief's schedule, we, the daycare licensing inspections and the foster care licensing, we do together, because it goes into the general, and we just kept it combined, not his, we didn't break it out.
What happens to violators?
In our office, we have a $300, if you don't get a building permit fee, $300 charge for after the permit. We don't have a violator fee here, but as for example, for us, for the septic review, doesn't go to the state unless you pay. And for test pits, if I don't witness them, plans don't get submitted to the, or myself or the assistant, they don't get submitted to the planning board. So for us, if you don't do it, your plans don't go anywhere. For the chief...
For us, same thing, $300 for the first time, and then $900 for the second time.
So if they don't do it the second time? I'm just pushing the buttons, I wanna, you know, what happens, someone just says, I just don't want to pay.
They don't get the inspection, they don't get the permit, they don't get the review. I mean, I'm, I, I think what I'm hearing is that you're suggesting the money... I mean, I'm, I think what I'm hearing is that you're suggesting the money is submitted upfront. In other words, you don't, you get the money first.
Okay.
And we recently had a subject design in Thurston, excuse me, chest that weighed five times, the plans came back. I mean, that's, there's just no reason for that.
Is there language that actually states what I was trying to get to? If something is a violation, they refuse to pay the fees, they will not get a permit, or they will not get an inspection, then, I'm just looking for what the legal issue is. I think you're fine with respect to the money, I just want to take it one more step farther.
For me, when I looked at a lot of the fire departments around here, for the fee schedule, they also have a permit that you have to fill out, and it adds all this information into it, for what you're requesting, if you're requesting the assembly permit or whatnot. And then that's when there has a lot of the...
Legally?
Legal stuff on the bottom, where when they sign it, they're giving the town the money for the application for the permit, and then we go and do it after we receive that.
Please.
All the stuff that was on the list, you're doing that now, but you're just not getting paid for it?
Yeah.
There's nothing with the fire department charges for it.
So that's, in terms of investigation, the research you've done, that's kind of unique? Most towns charge for these services?
Yeah, I mean, we were just talking about it, whenever I get a, somebody in here for a permit, they always ask me if there's a charge, and I say no, and they're like, "Oh, well, you're one of the only ones around here." And quite a few times too, I have residents try and pay for burn permits and other permits when they come in. And the one that we cannot charge for, because of the state, is a burn permit. We can't charge for that.
And I noticed nonprofits things you're not charging for.
Correct.
I understand that.
Yeah.
Any other questions at the board? I guess we'll hold a public hearing. Do you get a date, Julie?
The next meeting, August 14.
Thank you so much. Oh, Karen, before you get off, I know that with respect to item number 11, zoning appointments, how come so many people? Is people leaving?
Well, Lori Wilson passed away.
Yes.
And the other three are just reappointments.
Select Board, number nine, budget procedure.
As you may recall, when we talked at the last meeting about revising the budget process, and notification has gone out to department heads and committees and commissions, as well as information that they can use to start the budget prep. But the board wanted to talk at this meeting, at least start talking about whether you were going to provide instruction to everyone relative to the fiscal '19 budget. So that's why that's on the agenda. We should also, I think we've got...
We've got the...
Tonight, this is essentially the worksheet that was handed out to department heads to start their fiscal '19 budget preparations.
Comments?
In terms of directives, or in terms of that?
Any thoughts about?
Directives? Keep it low?
I think we're not ready to move forward on that, so we're going to hold, we'll have further discussion later. But it's obviously something that the, obviously, the department heads will be looking for, some kind of direction at that point.
Well, I think the department is always doing a very nice job in terms of only asking for what they absolutely positively need. The big thing for me is if we can get the capital stuff, you know, as soon as possible.
The capital improvement plan, yeah.
So we can get a general idea, because the whole idea of this is to get everything so we kind of have a general idea of how things are going, or how things are trending. And the capital stuff usually is a big part of that. So that would be my concern. And also, as soon as we can get the numbers from the health insurance people in terms of what they guarantee maximums, that's a good piece of information as well. But in terms of salary pool, I don't know if I'm ready to discuss that. But I think just in terms of, you know, do what they usually do in terms of bringing in what they need, and let us know if there's extenuating circumstances that they need something extra this particular year. I think they do a very nice job in terms of their explanations and justifying what they want.
Hearing?
No, I think, I think that... I think it's a great idea, we get to jump on it. I think it's a great idea that we... I think we need to come up with some written directives on how we want, you know, what we're looking for. Certainly one of the, personally, again, I bring up my own master plan. There's costs inside the master plan that I never see, and I never see in the budget. If you read the master plan, there's things in there that say, "We're going to do this, we're going to do that, we're going to do that." There's costs associated with them, but there's absolutely nothing on where the money's going to come from.
Ms. Rossi? You've just spoken to the chairman of the planning board with respect to...
He is traveling, and what we have spoken the last time that I talked with him, is I'm getting together for the next planning board meeting, an outline of what they said they were going to do, you know, different, and what has been done, and we were going to go over that, we're going to start that, hopefully at the next meeting. But I am getting a list together for the next meeting, which is August 24.
And I guess it was talked about last time, getting the capital improvements plan updated?
Yes, so I spoke with he, when they, when Julie sent out that last email about the budget process changing, he called me from his vacation, and I explained to him that I met with, I was here, and that I explained to the board that he's away, so we won't be able to start the budget process quite as early for this, this year, but next year, and he did not think that there would be a problem with that for next year at all.
Good. It's like a moving retroaction. Thank you.
Can I, I'd actually like to talk about the budget.
Please.
My budget, last year, we budgeted $30,000 for legal expenses. And I believe that Ms. Glover can chime in if necessary, please. I went over by 12, over $12,000 on my legal line item, which made my overall budget over by about $9,000. So instead of $30,000, it was $42,328.34. I just wanted to bring...
You just want to bring it to our attention?
That it's over. And also, in bill, because you've increased his hours, that budget is over as well.
Okay.
But overall, I think it's over by $10,000.
My regular budget was not over, but because my legal was over, my budget is over.
$99,000.
And some of that legal activity is still ongoing, is it?
Correct. Yes.
But the, I was going to say the towns, it's all the towns. The general legal expense had $11,215 left over, so there's enough money in that. But I do think it's still important to carry the costs in the planning and zoning, so that we can see where the expenses are for future years, so.
I agree. Thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Thank you.
I have 10, Julie Glover, town administrator.
So because we did get a letter, I guess an official letter, from the school board, I just wanted to bring it to the board, and I know that there were discussions about having Mr. Bugby work on the Oyster River, but it seems like they're forming a much more structured group, so I thought we should bring it forward at this time. Also, Dr. Morse did respond to my question, and the school board will be selecting the town representatives. So in addition to the Select Board and Town Council in Durham serving on this committee, they're also looking for two community members from each town. So, but the school board will be selecting those.
You know, they wanted a select person.
Yes.
And there are two extra people, probably, I got that.
They going to, how are they going to solicit those particular names?
Yeah, that's a good question.
I was not provided that information.
They, they asked the board members to submit names, I submitted one from the town. But you, if you want me to submit more names, I'm more than happy to do that.
Well, it's supposed to be two from each town, so.
You can submit as many as you want, go vet them, and, you know, if they like someone who has facility backgrounds, engineering, building, anything like that, even budgets.
Would the board entertain the idea of putting something in the carrier to let the residents know? And then we can forward those to your, maybe to you, Brian?
We're Dr. Morse, Dr. Morse, Brian.
Okay.
I think that's a good idea.
Are we in on that?
I'm fine with that. And I have no objection to having Mr. Bugby serve on this Oyster River School District Middle School Project Committee? I guess it's called at this point? Do you have any issues with that? Mr. Brown?
None at all.
Obviously, you've been appointed.
Oh, my, thank you. Yeah, they have kind of an aggressive schedule, so.
Yes, they do.
So I will, when we meet, I'll give you an update on what's talked about at that particular meeting, so you keep you guys in...
You're appreciated. Okay, did we know, Brian, when they want to form that committee?
We're going to go over some names this week, and we figure within the next, the next meeting, two more weeks, hopefully we'll have it finalized, because I believe their first meeting is getting on the first. I know the council, the council is out there, it's on...
So we put it in town cry, put in there some language that you need to be interested, you better move on it very quickly. Okay, thank you.
And can I ask Brian a question?
Please.
Meetings are at night, Brian, I assume?
Uh, yes, they'll be at night. There is another committee of the middle school staff that'll be during the day. But I believe this should be at night.
So if anybody calls the town hall, you can give them that information, that will be at night, so. Sometimes, if it's during the day, I can't be there, or if it's night, I can't be out, so.
Wait, Russell?
Russell, thank you.
Thank you. As the board, I think, is aware, the racetrack from time to time requests permission from the State Liquor Commission to expand the area where they serve alcohol, as they did, I think, with this past weekend with the rodeo event. And they also did that last year. The Liquor Commission requires a few things, including that a town official sign off on this. So staff and I are just looking for guidance from the board as to whether you want to, or whether you're comfortable with having the Planning and Zoning Administrator, the Fire Chief, and the Police Chief review the pertinent facts and provide the official response to the racetrack, although it could be someone else. We actually have a request from someone else coming up in August, I think, wants to have an event serving alcohol. Or would you prefer that the selectmen be the town officials that are giving the approval? In which case, obviously, we're just going to have to let people know that there needs to be a longer lead time in order to get the approval.
I don't have any issues with respect to the Police Chief, Fire Chief, and Planning and Zoning Administrator or Director at this point making that formal decision. All I would, just, please let us know, though, somehow, through the town administrator.
I want to know, we want to know that it's going to happen.
You know, just a simple statement saying it's been approved and reviewed, and on this particular night, something along that line. So I have no problem with that whatsoever. Comments? Police, fire, any issues?
Not here.
Okay.
Could I amend that to all of them need to agree?
All of them need to agree, yes.
So all three agree, no problems.
Police, come forward. You fine?
No, he was agreeing.
Oh, he's agreeing. Are you all agreeing?
He's agreeing.
We'll make up a form.
All right, so can you, can you put together formal policy, then we'll just put it into, we'll make it legal at that point?
Yeah.
No, I have no problem with that whatsoever.
Can I ask the two chiefs how the event went this weekend? Were the issues solved from last year? So it went fine?
I think for the most part, they were, but, you know, we had a thousand people, so it still came up a little short in some areas. But I heard all positive, but last year, there were a lot of negative comments after. I haven't heard any negative, it's been positive, people enjoyed it.
Okay. So I assume there's a debrief at the end or something that...
We usually have a sit down with Holly from Council Media.
Okay.
Talk about, talk about any issues that arose. They were more proactive in signage. I put the message board down there, the electronic sign, you know, stating no coolers, no backpacks.
So hopefully, they can make some changes, because there's another one, what, in September, October, or something? There's another one.
We're going to talk about that later.
Oh, we've talked about that.
We're going to talk about that. I'm going to miss that, yes, for me.
Okay, you have the floor.
So it was brought to my attention very recently, tonight, that they are also, they, the racetrack, the USX Speedway, are also looking at having a demolition derby. I've reviewed the racetrack ordinance again. I, if I was making the decision, I would not make that decision under Section 17, Other Events. I think because it involves motor vehicles, I think that an argument could be made that if they want that type of event, at the very least, it really should be planned for and part of the licensing, public hearing, discussion, and decision-making. It, it may even require a change in the ordinance. The ordinance is really silent, obviously, on a specific demolition derby. But my feeling is that because it's involving motor vehicles, you might not want to consider it to be some other type of event. I mean, the racetrack ordinance certainly talks about related vehicle activities as something that's held over here versus the other events, such as the rodeo that just occurred. And Ms. Rossi will certainly speak to this, but I don't know how the zone, the Planning Board, Zoning Board would view this either, because it's definitely not an outdoor sporting event. It's, it's motor vehicle.
They went to the Zoning Board and the Board of Selectmen in 2012, they meeting the Speedway, and they got permission from both the Zoning Board and the Planning Board to have outdoor sporting events, which is what the rodeo fell under, an outdoor sporting event. This appears to me, I admit I don't know anything about demolition derby. In my first glance, I would not consider it a sporting event. I don't think of, I think of that as an automobile event, not a sporting event.
And I concur at this point. Comment?
I hadn't heard anything about them wanting to do it, so I don't know.
This was just brought to my attention over the weekend, so.
Please.
By? The Police Chief.
I know on their schedule, that particular date, on the schedule that they brought forward, it says, "After-season event to be determined." So there is a date in their schedule for an event. And then with the closing of the Rochester Fair, they were approached.
Oh, no, it all makes sense.
And that's how the demolition derby ended up wanting to come to the track.
It, it's a completely new use, I don't think they've ever done that there?
Yeah, I don't know, not since I've been here.
Generally speaking, a demolition derby is on a figure eight, somewhere in there, so I mean...
Could be in the center.
The center, the center area there. So I think it's something we need to discuss with them, if that's what they want to do, and see if, you know, how we want to handle it.
Well, I think at this point, we need to send them a message, until, you know, at this point, they can't move forward.
Well, I guess then the question would be, will this board, even if they meet with you and have a further discussion, are you going to consider letting them have it this year? Or you want to tell them, this is a completely new thing, that maybe can't happen this year, and we'll all talk about it for next year?
And if you want to let them have it, not to interrupt, I apologize, it would have to be under the racetrack ordinance, because in order for it to happen as an event, if they would have to go to the Zoning Board, get Zoning Board approval, come to this board, get this board approval, and then go to the Planning Board. Which I would happily work with them through the process, but it, it won't happen for September.
I think it's premature to allow this to move forward, and I think it has to be reviewed and probably go back to a vote at this point.
And I, you know, in the discussion that I had with Red, that he's going to say, well, it is a race, just a different type of race, just to add up.
This person, I don't feel it's a sporting event, that's for sure.
Well, they haven't officially brought it and said, "This is what we're going to do," or they don't feel as though they need to, is that...
No, I don't think they, it's scheduled, it's, it's being advertised.
As a demolition derby?
As a demolition derby.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, it's, it's already been advertised, it's been, I found out about it on Facebook. And they felt that because they had that date on their schedule that said, you know, "After-season event to be determined."
So, and I, I don't have the schedule in front of me. They're allowed, I think, what, 23 racing events? Is that one of the 23, or is it outside the 23?
I believe it's one of the 23, because it was part of the original schedule that they brought forward.
Well, then I think we should contact the general manager, I forget his name, and tell him they need to come over and propose to us what it is the demolition derby is that makes it.
A race.
A race.
The procedure is ZBA first, then us, then Planning Board?
So I usually recommend that they come to you first, because it doesn't cost them anything to ask you, and you both have to agree for them to continue on to the Planning Board. So I always like, for the flea markets, they came to you first, then they applied to the Zoning Board. So it doesn't matter, I always suggest that they come to you first, because it's free. Because if they... Because if they, if you guys say no after they spend their few hundred dollars to go to the zoning board, it's pointless.
Well, I, I think.
Go ahead, please.
I'm not in favor of this, this particular year, so I'm saying no.
And I am, yeah.
So I guess the board's saying, no. So I guess have them go whatever route they want to take. But I don't think it qualifies as a other sporting event.
Right, or a race.
In my opinion, but.
So it's, so if you think it doesn't qualify for a sporting event, that's where, I, I agree with you too. So, but if you think it qualifies something under the racetrack ordinance, that's something completely separate. So if you said it doesn't qualify for anything, they need to go, then you can't say it's not, it's not automobile racing, but we'll let you have it. You, what I was saying is you can't do that, they have to go to the zoning board. But if you think it may qualify as an automobile race, that's a separate issue, does not involve the zoning board or the planning board?
I, I'm gonna guess that they would try to make the argument that it is a special activity that involves motor vehicles, and it's an event.
You know, I think we should, I think we should ask them to come over and, and tell us just exactly what the plan is. If we wanna turn them down after we know the facts, then I think that's, that's fine.
When is this scheduled for?
Yeah, towards the end of September.
September 23rd.
It's three weeks.
Part of the issue about having waiting for discussion.
Oh, no, it's about seven.
September, September 23rd.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. So then you may have time. Seven weeks, yeah.
Part of the issue of waiting for a formal discussion to come in is being advertised and probably being sold, the longer we drag it out. It's gonna be, I don't wanna call it hardship, but it's gonna be a disappointment to people who wanna wreck their cars, put it that way.
Well, I, I, I won't, I won't disagree with that, but the fact is, they have a right to come before us and say, you know, I mean, we're just, we're just, we're just saying no, we don't even know what it's all about. Other than the word demolition derby, we really don't know what the.
Well, I guess I'm looking for a language at this point, so I'm open to suggestion like, I'm gonna throw it out, this might not be the perfect language, is that we need to prevent the race from occurring until they're in front of the board for a formal discussion. So I wanna put them on notice, is what I'm saying. That we cannot move forward, we will not grant permission for this demolition derby until the board has, presented to the board for formal discussion. Even at that point, doesn't mean that we're gonna approve it.
No.
Do you, so you're not meeting again for two weeks, correct?
That is correct. So I guess we have the town administrator contact the manager of the track, saying at this point that we're gonna call a cease and desist or something along that line, give me some proper language that this is not gonna occur until we get a full disclosure and a full discussion by the board, and at that time, the board will make a decision whether to allow it or not. Ken?
I, I mean, when they come, they can speak to this. I actually have been to a demolition derby, although I have not been to a race, so I, I remember it being very loud, but I don't know whether it's louder than, you know, a regular racing event.
It, it wouldn't be louder than, than a regular racing event.
Can I request that the town administrator contact our legal people and see what the definition? If it falls within the racetrack ordinance, then it falls within. If it doesn't, in their opinion.
Yeah.
I would be against giving it to them this particular year, and they have to go through the ZBA and the planning board to add that particular kind of activity.
Did they used to have this at the Rochester Fair? Is that it?
Yeah.
And was there any issues at the Rochester Fair about having a demolition derby? I mean, in the form of accidents?
They've had it every year for, I don't know how many years, so I'm gonna assume that there wasn't.
The best ones are when they do it with school buses.
Right. I mean, the other, I know that Star Speedway and Epping Haslem and Hudson Speedway have them.
Well, I mean, you know, that's what I mean, it's.
Basically, the difference is it tears up their facility. That's what it does.
It tears up their facility, but also environmental concerns. I mean, one thing is leaking gas and oil into the track, but this is, this is gravel out there, right? This is dirt.
Uh, yes, yeah, most of it is, yeah, there is.
So you crack, you know, a case of oil, you gotta just spill it all over the ground, so there is a consideration there as well. So that's part of the consideration as well. Okay, I think we have enough information on that. Thank you very much.
That's all I know.
Today's more exciting than I thought it was gonna be.
Just wish they'd come to you in January.
Yes.
And all of this could be worked out.
Absolutely. Thank you on that. All right, next item, it's motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Discussion, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I should give you one of my votes for Bugby. It's a good idea. Whoops. I'm just waiting, sorry.
Move to accept the public meeting, public meeting minutes in July 7th, June 2017.
Second.
Discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Where happened to the Donna Eisenhardt pen?
What?
Dave stole that.
Dave stole that?
Oh, yeah.
Donna Eisen.
Yeah, it was a pen that was, I don't know which one that she gave out years ago, but that was wicked nice.
Wicked nice.
Wicked nice.
Wicked nice. I move to accept the manifest number two and week's payroll ending July 3rd, 12:17.
Second.
Did you say July 3rd?
30th.
30th.
I believe he said 30th.
30th. It's good to check, though. I need further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
My motion carries, thank you. Item 15.
14.
14. Move to enter non-public session of Hampshire RC 91-A colon 32 personnel and VRC.
Second.
Full call.
Yes.
Bugby?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. LaClair, yes. Motion carries. Town administrator, join us, please. Nothing sealed. Item 16, miscellaneous unfinished business.
Ah, miscellaneous unfinished business. I felt as though I had something committed to go. I don't know.
Oh, we have to ask about the statement that the lawyers drafted in response to VRC. They recommended us to not do it.
They wanted you to wait for the appeals period to, I think, the earliest court decision. And I don't know the date off the top of my head, but I'll.
Can we put that on, whenever that is, if you can get that into the record?
Anything exciting you wanna talk about? We've had pretty good exciting already, huh?
I guess not. I guess not.
Facilities committee accepted the August 28th date, so we can put that, that's official.
Oh, I just remembered something.
Uh-oh.
No, you go ahead, Bill.
He said facilities, and she jumped.
Well, that's what reminded me.
So they're okay with the 28th date, we're meeting some extra times. You're gonna get a brief, very brief history in terms of the process. You're gonna get detailed description of the three options we're gonna give you. You're gonna get an operating expenses for the proposed new spaces. You're gonna get a possible revenue that you can use, possible, you don't have to. And then the most of this, so it's gonna be like 15, 20 minutes, it's gonna be relatively short, and then there's gonna appear, a period where you can ask questions. And in terms of people could ask questions.
Good.
So that's what's being proposed, if you want something different, less.
That sounds like it's a good, good way to go. All right, what's so exciting?
So I learned today, or I had confirmed today, something that I heard for the first time last week. The buildings at Town Center have lead paint on the outside. And this came up because we were questioning, I don't know if you've noticed, when you walk into town hall, the side, it's peeling. Gee, can't we, oh, it's all lead paint under it, not the white paint, the paint underneath, which means you can't just scrape it off.
So it was a coat, another paint job years ago when they were using lead-based paint?
Allegedly, allegedly, the previous administration just, just painted over the.
Do, do we know this only by word of mouth, or do we have something?
No, Bill Stevens did the ta, the lead paint test. So I guess now we need to explore and discuss, not necessarily right now, but just wanted to bring you to your attention, 'cause I wanted you to, you know, that's a part of the facilities.
Yes, it is.
Committee number, because you can't just, we can't scrape it off.
And that's the outside paint, or is it inside?
Well, it's not painted inside, as far as I know.
It's probably the outside paint, 'cause what happened.
It's the outside paint, yeah.
'Cause what happened, I guess, years ago, I was involved in this, I threatened to have it burned down, 'cause I, probably in a minute, if you look in there, it says burn it down. And I said, then there was a big floor battle, and obviously, the historical protection and so forth wanted, for society wanted to maintain it. And I said, well, if you're gonna maintain it, you better paint it, 'cause it was really terrible look, terrible, terrible at that time.
Can I ask?
So they slacked paint on it.
Did we test any other buildings? Annex?
Yeah, I say, I said, all of them.
All of them, oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
All of the buildings at the Town Center apparently have.
Such as library, annex, and.
Annex, museum.
Oh, the annex isn't confirmed, but town hall, the library, the historical society, and the Hobo Shadown. So I guess.
Piece of history there.
What I will do in the first instance is get ahold of a painter, maybe, and just find out, okay, what exactly do we have to do?
Yeah.
Yes.
'Cause obviously, they can't just scrape it and let it fall on the ground.
I think if it, if it's not, if it's not peeling, I know in the short term, you can just leave it alone, but obviously the.
It's peeling.
It's peeling.
It's looking bad again, yes.
So, found that out today, so.
I'll pass that on.
Yeah.
Yeah, please.
Well, the, the town hall, so it's just the upper parts in terms of the trim? 'Cause the brick is.
The brick is.
I'd have to confirm where Mr. Stevens did the test, but you could assume that if it's in one place, it's probably everywhere.
I'll pass that on. They'll be so excited.
Anything else? Mr. Brown?
Mr. Bugby?
Town administrator? Town secretary? Move to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.